If you would like to take your seats, we're about to commence. Good evening everybody and welcome to the Sporting Village to this annual council meeting. There's no planned fire alarm this evening, so if the alarm does sound, please leave by the nearest marked fire exit. Sporting Village staff will provide assistance and direction as necessary. We are recording the meeting this evening. The webcast will be transmitted live through the council's YouTube channel and will also be available on the council's website following the meeting. Generally, the public seating areas are not filmed. However, by entering the hall and using the public seating area, you are consenting to being filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recording for webcasting and training purposes. I'd like to firstly just say welcome to all the new members here this evening and congratulations on your election and also offer our best wishes to those councillors or former councillors who are no longer with us. And I'd also just like to state how great it is that we're now all back together for these meetings, albeit in a bit of an unusual setting. Before I formally open the meeting, we're all aware of the passing of His Royal Highness, Prince Philip the Duke of Edinburgh last month. We remember with great fondness and thanks the many years of dedicated service His Royal Highness gave to our country. We have very fond memories of His Royal Highness visiting Basildon in 1999 when Her Majesty the Queen officially opened the glass bell tower of St Martin of Tours Church in Basildon town centre. This is remembered in the history of our borough as a very special day. Many residents also remember His Royal Highness visiting the Carreras Tobacco Factory in March 1960 and how at ease he made the workers feel when he chatted to them. I've also heard from many who were schoolchildren at the time of the excitement he created as he travelled past by car. Her Majesty and our nation has lost a loyal and faithful servant. However, his memory and legacy will live on for many years to come. I've also been informed that sadly Derek Brindley, a member of council staff, passed away on Monday the 3rd of May. Derek worked for the council as a refuge loader and more recently a storekeeper at Barleylands Depot. Derek had been employed by the council since May 2004. He died in hospital after being diagnosed with cancer. If I could ask us all to please stand for a moment, silence. Agenda item one: Election of Mayor. Before inviting nominations, as is usual, I would like to give a few words as the outgoing mayor. It's been an absolute honour and privilege of my life to date serving as councillor, deputy mayor and for the last two years as mayor of Basildon Borough. I'm going to miss both roles. A previous American politician whose politics I have to say I don't particularly share, however the word she said summed up the service role we all carry out by saying 'there's no greater challenge and there is no greater honour than to be in public service'. I'm sure many of us will concur with that statement. Our public service roles can take up a considerable amount of our time, many more hours than people realise. It takes an immense level of commitment, often on top of a day job, to do the role well. But the role of councillor is massively important. The public have put their trust in you to represent them and be the voice when it needs to be heard, to support them when they need support, to behave of honesty and integrity and to always conduct oneself in line with the Nolan principles. It's a role that comes with great responsibility. Politics in Basildon can often be divisive and can turn vile. I ask all members to reflect on this. The division often starts from the top and flows down to the public. If the public see members behaving in a way we sometimes witness, then how can we admonish the public when they act in similar ways? Sadly, some of the abuse I've seen directed at councillors, including myself, goes beyond individual policies and politics and becomes personal abuse. Even more so where members and their families feel personally threatened. This is simply not acceptable. We are all human, believe it or not, and under our often tough exterior as councillors, we all have feelings. The slogan we heard so often last year, #BeKind. I wish this was not forgotten and displayed much more in everyday life. Ultimately, you have a responsibility, all of you, to represent your residents in a professional manner. This is an important chamber of business, not a primary school playground. The behaviours I witnessed over the last year fell way below what is acceptable and I really hope that our next mayor reflects on this before taking their seat as these behaviours must stop. On a more positive note, the biggest highlight of my time as mayor has been meeting so many members of our wonderful communities. I've said it so many times before. Many of these groups and organisations which operate in our borough really are the lifeblood of our community. Without them, we'd be a much poorer place. It was in that regard that I wanted to do as much as I could to assist them, so we launched the Basildon Borough Community Lottery. This really is helping organisations and the Mayor's Charity Trust gain a regular income from those who play. Performance to date has been good and I hope that post-pandemic the opportunity to get more supporters on board to support these great organisations will happen. In my first year as mayor, we raised a total of £12,404. My key focus was raising funds for the Joe Cox Foundation but with the aim of creating a project that would have an impact within our borough. On the back of this, More In Common Basildon Borough was born with the key goal of fighting loneliness and social isolation and driving greater community cohesion. I established the Mayor's Community Foundation, which aimed to give grants of up to £500 to organisations that both myself or the deputy mayor had visited during that year. We awarded a total of £1,482 for projects undertaken by the Missley Community Foundation, Kingston Ridge Scout Camp and RCCG Majestic Connections for their food bank rooming their new premises. As the pandemic hit last March, we reviewed some surplus funds we had and decided to award £500 each to five different food banks across the borough. The pandemic brought additional challenges for many people. At Christmas, we highlighted the plight of casual workers in hospitality who missed out on overtime and tips during the festive season. The Keep the Lights On campaign aimed to gather donations from businesses and the public and then award grants to those most in need who had suffered lost income. We raised an amazing £38,323. Due to the outstanding amount raised, there was £5,600 left from the funds after satisfying all the eligible awards. And we agreed recently with one of the bigger business donors to reassign their donation to mental health charities in the borough. We all know they are needed more than ever at the moment and we were pleased to award £1,866 each to the Craig Tyler Trust, Sociability and the Listening Post. In what was set to be a difficult fundraising year, last summer I set the goal of raising £5,000 for the Polyparet Appeal to provide a new interactive outdoor area at Basildon Hospital between the children's ward and the polyparet pad. I'm pleased to say that we achieved that goal and even managed to raise enough to award a further £775 each to the Polyparet Appeal and to More In Common Basildon Borough to further their work. Therefore, the total funds raised over the last two years through the Mayor's Charity Appeal Trust was an outstanding £57,277. And I thank everybody, everybody who's contributed. You have seen that over the last year I've been carrying out a number of visits on behalf of the borough to organisations and group that have made a real contribution to the borough during the pandemic. to organisations and groups that have made a real contribution to the borough during the pandemic. Our Covid Remembrance and Recognition Working Group were also working on plans to install a permanent memorial garden in Gloucester Park and in other areas around the borough. We were working on a book of remembrance that will be both physical and online, but will serve as a real record of the positives as well as the challenges we've witnessed over the last year. And also the Thank You Basildon campaign, to recognise all those in the borough who have contributed so much through the rolls, as well as recognising all those who did the right thing by stopping the spread. I'd love to see this work continue to completion. Finally, it was an honour and privilege to award Freedom of the Borough to Don Shepherd, our last remaining D-Day veteran in the borough, and to Trudy Westmore Cox, the founder of St Luke's Hospice. Tonight, council will also hopefully award the Freedom of the Borough to various NHS organisations, as a thank you for their tireless and dedicated work. I was also involved in a number of other projects, such as the Fight Against Loneliness, the launch of Basildon Side by Side, creating a positive change and education on the back of Black Lives Matter, driving our Armed Forces Covenant status to silver, and working to implement a youth mayor for this borough. And I'm proud to see that role being installed here tonight. In close, I'd like to thank all those residents, officers, colleagues, friends and family who have sent me best wishes over the last few weeks. I would particularly like to thank our outstanding council officers, and we are incredibly fortunate to have some great talent in our ranks. And of course, I must sincerely thank Tanya Kiran, my assistant, for her incredible work in supporting me over the last year and a half, and Louise Bresch before her. Derek Fellows, our deputy mayor, has done an amazing job and has been a tremendous support to me. Thank you, Derek. I must also thank my long-suffering consort, Mark, who has always been by my side when I've needed him to be. And when he's not been, he's always been behind the scenes, keeping our lives running whilst my diary has been so ridiculously busy. I could not have done it without you. I'd like to wish the new mayor and deputy mayor every success as they embrace this role over the coming year. And to finish my time as mayor with the words of murdered MP Jo Cox, whose foundations I committed to support when I took this role two years ago. 'We are far more united and have far more in common with each other than the things that divide us.' Thank you. Do we have any nominations for mayor of the council for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two municipal year?
Mr Mayor, before you do that, can I just say something, please? Mr Mayor, can I just say this? I sat there in two thousand and eighteen in a similar position to yourself, having lost a seat, and coming here to start the meeting. Can I just add that during the time which you served me as a deputy mayor, and then you became mayor, I think you've been fantastic for this borough. Politics do not enter into it once you've got the chain on and are going around visiting people in the borough. You've been an outstanding success, and like me, I'm sure you'll come back. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Harrison. Can I ask for nominations for mayor of the council for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two municipal year? Councillor Baggett.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I nominate councillor Dads.
And do you have a seconder? Councillor Sharada, thank you. Do I have any further nominations for mayor of the council? Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's not often I can't be seen, which I take as a compliment. My group would like to nominate councillor Green for the role of mayor of the borough for the next municipal year. This is seconded by my new colleague councillor Robins.
Councillor Robins, can you confirm that you are seconding that? Thank you. Do I have any further nominations? In that case, we will now put this to a direct vote. Please bear with us, because there's obviously a much larger room to go around counting hands. All those in favour of councillor Dads as mayor of the borough for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, please show. Okay. All those in favour of councillor Green to be mayor of the borough for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, please show. Any abstentions? One moment, please. With twenty-two votes for councillor Dads, councillor Dads is duly elected as mayor of the borough of Basildon.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Before I say a few words, could I invite councillor Jack Ferguson to say a few words in relation to the outgoing mayor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and may I thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Labour Group and pass our thanks on to David Burton Sampson. Put simply, David, you have been an outstanding mayor and a brilliant ambassador for our borough. Inside this chamber, you've promoted democracy, allowed all members to speak and have their opportunity to say. And outside in the community, you have done excellent work at bringing our community together, trying to combat loneliness and isolation, and promotion of equality, diversity and inclusion. Your work from day one in setting up More In Common Basildon Borough was work that was so vital, and work that, as we see today, is so important. And that work has also been excellently chaired by the deputy mayor councillor Derek Fellows, and may I also pass my thanks on to you councillor Fellows for all your work as chair of More In Common Basildon Borough. Your work on bringing pride to Basildon Borough, and the work that you've done in organising all the events that you've organised, has been exceptional, and this borough owes you a huge debt of thanks for the work that you've done. But as well as being an excellent mayor, you've also been an excellent councillor for St Martin's. The work that you've done going around your ward, getting to know your residents, the volume of casework that you've picked up, the residents of St Martin's have been very lucky to have you as their councillor. As well as being an outstanding mayor and an outstanding representative of this council, you've immersed yourself in the community. You've attended hundreds of events, and I remember attending your first event as your consort on that first day in Pitsy. And from that day, you've served this community and our borough with great distinction. You've organised events where you've sung with us, you've organised events where you've danced in the street with us, you've organised events where you've just been part of the community and really celebrated all that is good about Basildon Borough to try and bring us all together. And the work that you've done over the last twelve months in setting up a Facebook group as a support group for residents to try and communicate with each other and keep us all in touch with each other at the most vital time has been exceptional. And I know from personal experience of looking forward to going on to that Facebook group every morning to see the thought for the day and the comments that will be imposed as well. I'd also like to pass on my thanks to Mark as well. We must never forget the sacrifices that those at home make to allow us to do this job. And Mark, you've been an excellent husband, an excellent consort to David throughout this whole journey. And I also pass my thanks on to Debbie as well, for the support that she has offered you councillor Fellows during this period of time. On behalf of my party, on behalf of this council, David, we owe you a huge debt of gratitude. We are incredibly lucky to have had you as our mayor, and your legacy and your work in More In Common Basildon will live on. Thank you very much.
I'd like to say a few words. As your mayor, I believe my primary role is to represent the people of the borough. As councillors, we provide a bridge between the community and the council, speaking up for residents and helping directing them to the right people and services at the council. And we need to keep our community informed about the issues that may affect them. In order to understand and represent local views and priorities, we need to build a stronger relationship and encourage local people to make their views known to us and engage with the council. I believe councillors and the council are accountable to our electorate. And if local voters are unhappy with the council's conduct, they are able to hold councillors to account at the ballot box, which they have done so recently at the local elections. I can see here today we have residents from Leyndon Community Centre and the Residents' Party, who have both been fighting to change the direction of this council. One group wanted to save the Leyndon Community Centre, and the other group wanted to stop building of tower blocks. Their efforts on behalf of the community has changed the direction of this council. I am listening, we are listening. I will be speaking to residents and businesses during the coming year, listening and seeking to understand the issues that may be affecting our community. I will be taking these matters up with the leader of the council and the chief executive. I believe good communication and engagement are central to being an effective councillor and mayor and serving you. I will seek to ensure that council meetings are a forum for debate of matters of concern to the local community, and to work together for the benefit of our residents of the borough. I would expect all councillors from all parties to maintain the highest standards of conduct and ethics, as this is what residents would expect from their councillors and civic leaders. I know in our borough there is more that unites us than divides us. We recognise our five towns are diverse and special. We are united by a common purpose and shared values, with no one being left behind and everyone having a stake in our future. We must listen to our communities and represent them to the best of our abilities. In relation to the Mayor's Charity Appeal, this year I will be supporting two causes. The first, motivated minds promoting mental health and wellbeing across the borough. And secondly, the local food banks in Basildon, Pitsy, Leyndon, Wickford and Billericay during the municipal year. I would be very grateful to receive support from the community and yourselves in relation to these good causes. Apologies for absence. Are there any apologies for absence? Councillor.
Apologies from councillor Callahan.
Thank you. Are there any other apologies? Appointment of deputy mayor. Could I invite the outgoing mayor to say a few words, please?
Thank you councillor Dads, and may I congratulate you on being elected as the new mayor of the borough. It's a role that goes with a great deal of responsibility. Going back two years ago, when I was approached by both councillor Baggett and councillor Callahan with a view to forming an alliance with them, we all know, I won't bother to go over the fine details, I chose to go with the Labour Group and other independents. My reason was quite simple. I can remember speaking to councillor Callahan, or so it was yesterday. I said to him, 'I've checked your manifesto. I could have written that myself, not as a manifesto, but as my lifestyle. It's high on social values, and it's also protecting the green belt. And I think that your alliance has done both of those in the last two years.' Then he astounded me when he said, 'Derek, would you consider taking on the role or the post of deputy mayor?' And I immediately said, 'No way. That's not for me. No, no.' And he said, 'Okay, he said, 'Look, don't reject it out of hand.' He said, 'Give it a day or two to consider it, he said, 'and we'll talk again.' And we put the phone down, and I still went away from that phone call thinking, 'No, no, no, that's not for me.' But then I got to think about it. And councillor Callahan was quite right to give me those two days. An old head on young shoulders, perhaps, you know, he is. And I kept challenging myself, 'Well, why isn't it for you? Why isn't it? You're a young guy, you need challenges.' And I went back to him and I said, 'I don't know what it involves, but yeah, I'm happy to take this on.' And I stood alongside a fantastic mayor, David Burton Sampson and his consort, Mark, who I've grown to take as my friends over the last two years. It's been an absolute privilege and an honour. But I didn't realise the enormity of the role until summer of two thousand and nineteen, when the mayor was in another engagement, and I had to open up the Wickford Town Carnival. And also attending there was one Mark Francois MP. And I've known Mark for many years, since he was a young man in Leyndon. And during the day, we got to chatting, and I said, 'We got to talk about our speeches.' And I said, 'Oh, of course, you'll go first, Mark, won't you? Thinking that an MP outranks a deputy mayor.' And his next words made my knees buckle with the enormity of it. He said, 'Oh, no, Derek.' He said, 'You are the Queen's representative here today, and as such, you take precedence.' I was, well, astounded. But anyway, I made my speech, and unfortunately Mark had to leave because the carnival was running several hours late, and he had an appointment up in London. During my two years as deputy mayor, sadly because of Covid, I've not had much to do this year, the mayor challenged me with another role. He said, 'I want you to take on the chairmanship of More In Common Basildon Borough.' And I thought, 'The guy has a great ability to get people to do things that they don't necessarily seek or want.' But I did take on that role. Bright-eyed and bushy-tailed, with just the expectation of organising lots of events and reaching out to people, the remit of our constitution. But then we got hit by Covid, and my wild plans of doing things got put on the back burner. But we are back, and we will be coming out of lockdown, please dear God. But we are back and we will be coming out of lockdown, please dear God. But it's been a fantastic privilege representing the 190,000 people of the borough of all political parties and as has been consistently said tonight, the role of mayor and deputy mayor is not a political decision. The mayors and deputy mayors, you may all know, across the borough and external, we're all collectively known as the chain gang for fairly obvious reasons. And we really, we haven't had a chance to meet that much this year, obviously. But it's been a great privilege to meet all these people, long-serving deputy mayors, their consorts and the mayors. I won't go on because I don't like long farewells, you know, yell at you all crying in a minute. But I'd like to thank our officers and this borough is blessed with a hard-working team of dedicated and very skillful officers. I'd also like to thank Tanya, who is the mayor's secretary, she's been invaluable. She's driven me crazy because she is so efficient and it's not perhaps comfortable with me to be driven around by someone who is so efficient, but she's kept us on our toes. Final, a word for the mayor. Sorry, the outgoing mayor, beg your pardon. David, it's been a privilege working alongside you and supporting you. You may not be great in stature, but you are a colossus amongst men. I mean that sincerely. You are like a dynamo in everything you take on, be it your work as a councillor, be it your work as the mayor, be it your work with Pride, be it your work in being the founder and patron of More in Common Baslin Borough, your residents association and so many, many other things. So it really has been a true privilege to be alongside you. And in closing, I will say to the mayor alongside me and everyone, the weekend of the 18th to the 21st of June is the summer get-together for the More in Common Baslin Borough and in fact nationally. And we are not a political group. So there is a request, Mr Mayor, in your inbox. If you would kindly allow us to fly the flag, the More in Common Baslin Borough flag, over the Bas Center over that weekend, please. Thank you.
May I please have the nominations for Deputy Mayor for the municipal year 21/22?
Mr Mayor, nominate councillor Mackenzie.
Is there a seconder? Councillor Rimmer? Are there any further nominations for Deputy Mayor? Therefore councillor Mackenzie is appointed unco... Oh, sorry, apologise. I couldn't see.
Sorry, last minute. I nominate councillor Davies.
Thank you. Do you have a seconder? Thank you. So therefore we'll have a vote. Can I have? Ask for those who are... apologies, another. Yes. Brockman, councillor Brockman.
We couldn't hear who else was nominated, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Alan Davies.
I've got a nomination.
Yes, please.
Councillor Kerry Smith.
Thank you. Do you have a seconder?
Mr Mayor, it would be far cruel for me to stand beside you and have to restrain myself. I couldn't oblige that commitment.
So therefore you don't accept the nomination. Thank you. Councillor Brockman, the nomination is not accepted. Are there any other nominations? Had there been no other nominations, I ask for a vote. Those in favour councillor Mackenzie, please show. Days for councillor Davies? Any abstentions? There are 23 votes for councillor Mackenzie, so therefore councillor Mackenzie is appointed Deputy Mayor for the municipal year. Thank you.
Mayor, is it possible? Mayor?
Councillor Blake? Okay councillor Blake, if you wait for one moment, I'll ask the officer to check the voting record, please. Yes, councillor Burkinshaw has, sorry, Mr Burkinshaw has said that there are actually 24 votes for councillor Mackenzie. Thank you. Welcome councillor Mackenzie. Welcome.
Thank you.
So item number four is the appointment of Baslin Borough Youth Mayor and Deputy Youth Mayor for 2001 and, sorry, 2021, 2022. At the last council meeting, it was agreed that elected chairman and vice-chairman of Baslin Youth Council will be appointed as the Baslin Borough Youth Mayor and Deputy Mayor. The youth mayor will act as a role model for the young people and advocate of pride in the borough, marrying the role of mayor of Baslin Borough. I'd like to welcome the chairman and vice-chairman of the youth council to the meeting and seek approval of their appointment as the first Baslin Youth Mayor and Deputy Mayor for 2021. And I would like to seek approval of their appointment with the consent of the meeting without the need for a formal vote. Does everyone agree?
Agreed.
Now, would you like to say a few words?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Naomi Ojo and I am the new elected chair of the Baslin Borough Youth Council. Extending to the role of chair is a great opportunity of being the youth mayor. As youth mayor, I'll be representing the young people of Baslin Borough in events and decisions. In this role, I promise to effectively voice the opinions and ideas of the youth to the mayor, councillors and the wider community. As a young person, I believe that young people need an individual that represents them and makes their voices heard. I am willing to take on this responsibility of sharing their views in order to make Baslin Borough a more safer and comfortable place for them to live in. I will act as a role model for young people and represent them in a favourable manner when working alongside the mayor of Basildon. It is vital that the youth of Basildon don't feel powerless because we are the future and our voices are just as important and deserve to be heard. Thank you.
Can I thank you Naomi and I wish you very well in the year ahead and I hope to work with you on many things going forward. And I know I've met the youth council previously before and I understand and I know the good work that you do. So thank you, welcome. And now item five, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest by members? Minutes. Do I have your agreement to sign the minutes of the council meeting held on the 18th of March 2021? Does anyone disagree? Therefore I will sign them. Announcements. There are no announcements. As I understand it from the deputy mayor, myself, the former leader is not here and the chief executive. Do you have any announcements? No. Eight, establishment of council committees, allocation of committee seats, timetable of ordinary meetings and appointments outside bodies. There's a report from the chief executive circulated to all members of the council. I call councillor Andrew Barrett to move the recommendation. And can I ask for a seconder, please?
I so move, Mr Mayor.
Seconder, please. Councillor Morris. So you have about 10 minutes to move the paper, but if you need longer, then please take the time you require.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to echo your comments and the previous mayor's comments in welcoming new members to the chamber and saying goodbye to the old and thanking them for the service that they have given to the residents of this borough. I'd also like to congratulate you, the mayor and the deputy mayor on your roles, which I know you will fulfil to the utmost of your ability. And I hope that it's a good and fruitful year for you both. Mr Mayor, the leadership of the council actually reflects the entire council. In that respect, I would like to offer my sincere apologies to the residents of this borough and specifically the residents of Leyndon for how this council has gone about its business for the last year. We had residents insulted on social media by those they elected, wild unsubstantiated allegations against the community from elected members and the complete disregard for opinions and views on matters that materially affect their community. This showed an arrogance and contempt for an administration that because of the pandemic had not even been elected. I apologise. Furthermore, I make a promise. This administration will deal with residents as we would like to be dealt with ourselves with respect and integrity. At times we may disagree, but let us agree to listen and respect different points of view. We will put the community at the heart of what we do. We will consult widely, inclusively and not by asking leading questions. We will conduct our business putting the needs of the residents first and will be equal and fairly disposed across the five towns of this borough. At a recent committee councillor Harrison stated, and I quote, as you are probably fully aware, what is written on literature doesn't carry any weight when it comes to administration. Well, I disagree. I believe what is written on election literature carries all the weight when it comes to administration. And in that regard, with this order paper, I have tasked chairman to align work programmes to ensure this year we deliver on our election pledges. If we fall short, for whatever reason, we will explain clearly, without spin, why not? And how we intend to correct things. As Bob Dylan said, the times they are a-changing. What doesn't seem to be changing though unfortunately is the fake news and lies on social media for the opposition. Already, rolling out a tired refrain of how we are increasing salaries by £100,000, which I believe was quoted on social media yesterday. So I want to state for the public record that in fact our setup, which is designed to bring focus to areas too long ignored, actually changes the allowance by £19,000. And here's a point, Mr Mayor, members don't receive a salary. They get an allowance to compensate for the time given up and the responsibilities they hold. This allowance is set by an independent body which we have never gone against the recommendations of. So to give you some perspective, Mr Mayor, the cost of an ill-fought-out youth zone, £4.1 million. Cost of the proposed high-rise town, hundreds of thousands of pounds in consultancy fees. Delivery on our pledges to residents, priceless. Rather than fanciful ego projects, we will get the basics right. With immediate effect, we've extended free car parking, which was due to cease on Monday, for a further month to support trade in our high streets as they reopen post-Covid. The Leyndon centre is to be reopened and refurbished as soon as possible. And I requested officers to produce a clear timetable to circulated Leyndon residents with some form of opening by mid-July. But a timetable that they will be able to see so that there are no myths, no rumours. They will see exactly what is happening, when and how. We will get our Pitsy swimming pool back on track. Following the failure of the previous administration to do so, we are sending Wick Green back to committee to rescind the previous decision which was contrary to the wishes of residents. We will be rolling out a full and proper consultation on the town centre as wide-ranging, far-reaching as possible. And I ask for all residents to please, please contribute and give their views to us so that we can get a town centre that is fit for purpose in the 21st century and one that residents can enjoy. In mid-June, we'll be calling an emergency budget to put into action all that we promised at the last budget meeting. This will obviously be within the next two minutes. In that, we did promise a 2% reduction in counter tax and we will deliver that next year. But the cost of recalculating counter tax and issuing counter tax demands is counterproductive on costs for this year. This budget will also address an issue that many residents have raised concerns about me, the state of our estates. Under the capable auspices of councillor Schrader and his committee, we'll be taking a firm grip on investment in our estates and their renovation. Under our watch, no estates will be forgotten. We are reinstating Twinning, an area which is always offered much while asking very little and was churlishly removed last year. We will continue our investment in putting police back on the streets where they are needed. We will be looking to increase car parking facilities across the borough, a subject which again came up time and time during the election when I spoke with over 1,000 residents personally. We will be equal and fair across the borough when it comes to investment. We will be providing investments in Leyndon, Leyndon Hills, the town centre, Wickford, Pitsy, Vange and last but not least, Billerica, a part of the borough ignored under the previous administration. And I know that councillor Turner and Headley will continue to push this as much as they can in regard to looking at their wards and the investment that they want. With councillors now elected across the borough, this is an administration which can hear the voice of residents and give them a voice equally and fairly. We are ceasing the youth zone project. Instead, we'll be investing in youth themselves, working closely with Essex County Council. We can target resources for youth where they want it and how they want it. It's about delivering for youth and not a shiny building with people that can't get to it or are reluctant to use it. Of course, if someone does come along with £4.1 million cheque and a commitment to fund half a million pound a year, we may re-look at it. And I also would like to hear from the youth mayor, and I congratulate her on her appointment, with regard to her views of youth provision and youth facilities in the borough overall. Mr Mayor, we are committed to pursuing a green agenda so the future generations can enjoy the environment they grow up in. This includes building in design for new houses to reduce poor consumption and carbon emission. I also believe that it's important to recognise what we don't know and to find advice if needed. In that regard, I'm exploring where we may turn for credible, practical advice from respected guru in the green field. We should never be embarrassed to ask for help in areas outside our expertise and it's arrogant to believe that we know everything. The Essex County Council Climate Commission, I'm sure, will be very informative in that regard as well. I also intend to get a grip of enforcement and public order issues across the borough. Too long, unauthorised development in the green belt has been allowed to fester. No more. We won't be fining pensioners for dropping sweet wrappers, but we will pursue fly-tv aggressively. A contributing factor to the general tiredness of our estates is rubbish being put out at incorrect times, and this can't be tolerated, and we will look to educate in the first instance and fine in the second. When speaking to residents across the borough, I heard numerous stories of drugs being dealt on street corners, in alleyways and car parks. I'll be pushing the police to support us in eradicating this scourge that negatively impacts on so many. Residents also raised issues of much-loved play areas falling into disrepair. Over this summer, those identified will be refreshed and renewed and done in time for children to enjoy them before the winter. We will also be wholeheartedly supporting Basiden side by side, and I look forward to hearing from them in the near future, because we should recognise diversity in all its forms in the borough. And through Essella, we'll be refocusing on moving from local government reform to actually delivering for residents on big projects and much-needed infrastructure. But we must do this against a backdrop of a challenging financial position as a result of COVID and a profligate administration who committed council resources without knowing where the money was coming from. Already councillor Sullivan has uncovered a further 100,000 a year cost attached to the youth zone, which has never been mentioned. COVID has not just affected our finances, but it has disrupted communities and businesses. Our goal is to assist in their recovery while also looking for the future prosperity of this great borough. It is a challenge. What I've seen from our residents is a great resilience, and we need to emulate that. The community and council working together makes us collectively stronger. In closing, I leave where I started with our pledge. We will put the community at the heart of what we do. We will be equal and fair across the borough. We will deliver on our promises. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Baggett, thank you very much. What I'm going to do is accept what you've just said as your statement by the leader of the council, item nine. What I would ask you now is to please speak to item eight regarding the allocation of committee seats, timetable of meetings and outside appointments. Could I call you now, no more than 10 minutes, to speak to item eight?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Only 10 minutes. Everybody, members and the public have heard what our plans are. We now have a committee system which is designed to do that. As I said, we need to provide an element of focus. That is why we have the new Public Order and Enforcement Committee to deliver what I said we will be delivering on tackling enforcement in areas, antisocial behaviour and drug dealing. We have the housing and estate renewal under councillor Schrader, which will be tackling these states. Communities and wellbeing under the very capable hands of councillor Sargent, who understands community very much, and will be at the forefront of working with the community on the Leyden Centre. We have the very capable councillor Headley on regeneration and economic development, a subject that I'm sure he dreams about, given the amount of meetings he has in that regard, and councillor Rimron on leisure and environment. Councillor Moore, who has been doing the local plan since the 1840s, will be on the strategic planning and infrastructure to include that we move the local plan forward in a way it should be. And of course, I'll be chairing the policy executive, which is the main body for the direction of the council. We are bringing back scrutiny in preparation for the cabinet system to come back so that we can actually have proper scrutiny of decisions. We shouldn't be scared of actually being challenged on the decisions we want to make, and we shouldn't be scared of being transparent with those decisions. I have tasked the chairman of that committee, who is also the deputy mayor, to also look into the unfounded allegations or potentially unfounded allegations about safeguarding, and for him to actually be able to reassure the public that when it came to Leyden Centre, there were no issues at all in that regard. Mr Mayor, it was a tough decision. Well, not that tough. But when it comes to the outside bodies, we made a decision that every year with the outside bodies, we have always ensured that there's a fair representation of political view across the borough. Last year, in a very churlish and small-minded way, the Alliance decided that they would not have any Conservative councillor on anybody that is an outside representative, and so we are reciprocating in that regard, and we will take those positions to ensure proper representation. And that is the order paper, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Baggett. I have councillor Morris as the second up. Do you want to speak on this item, councillor Morris? No, thank you. I have had to... I have some indication, I believe. I'm just going to confirm it now. Councillor Blake, I think you indicated to speak, is that right? Councillor Harrison, have you asked, indicated to speak? Councillor Smith. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Councillor Ferguson? It's a big room, so I'm struggling to see everyone. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? What I will do is I will call in order of leaders and then members. So firstly, I'll ask councillor Jack Ferguson to speak.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Tonight, we're voting on the order paper for a new administration. An order paper that apparently will set the vision and the direction of this council. If they get it right, it can make a real difference. If they get it wrong, it leads to dither, delay, while our residents suffer most. The last order paper passed by this council certainly made a difference to the lives of residents across our borough. It led to real change, for the first time in a generation, with ambition and aspiration for all being brought back to Basiden council. Cutting council allowances to tackle holiday hunger, turning on our streetlights, providing care leavers with the support that they deserve, investing in aids and adaption for our residents, building council homes, building a youth zone, giving our young people the centre that they deserve. An ambitious plan for our town centre, creating jobs and opportunity for all to succeed. And who can forget, bringing a swimming pool back to Pitsy eight years after the Tories closed it down. Now, I'd like to thank my predecessor as leader of the Labour Group, and councillor Baggett's predecessor as leader of the council, in councillor Callahan. The last 12 months has been challenging for us all in so many ways. But for our residents, it's been helped by the leadership of this council, who worked day and night to keep residents updated with answers to their questions. And the last 12 months has shown how well-placed the council was to deliver services to our residents when they need it most. And I'd also like to place on record my thanks to all those in the last administration that put party politics to one side, to work hand in hand to deliver for the interests of our residents across this borough. Working together, we showed what was possible. But the reason I look back is not to dwell on the past, but because there's a programme of ambition and aspiration for all for our residents that is available for any administration to build on if they choose it to. And if they bring forward measures that build upon our work, that provide youth services, that build youth centres that our young people deserve, that provide housing, that create jobs, the opposition I lead will be constructive and will support it. I have to say, though, I have my doubts. There is nothing that I have heard tonight from councillor Baggett that gives me any indication that ambition and aspiration for our residents will continue. And we all know, we've been here before. We've been here before with the Basiden Conservative Party. We know how it starts. Lots of jobs for themselves created, lots of new committees. In fact, whilst we wanted to create thousands of jobs for our residents, all they want to do is create jobs for their own members. Mr Mayor, politics is about priorities. On day one of the last administration, we cut the cost of council allowances to provide free school meals for children during school holidays. And let's look at the record over the last three weeks. Week one, youth zone scrapped. Week two, millions of pounds of private sector investment gone. Week three, pay rise for Conservative councillors. It is not looking good. And in putting forward an order paper that prioritises jobs for their own members rather than for the people of this borough, they have shown four years in that they still don't understand how the committee system works. We had a policy and resources committee. We could decide on policy, we could give it the resources that it needed on the very same night. They created two committees. We have a policy executive and a commercial and resources committee. And in doing so, he has given full fiscal control of this council to councillor Sullivan. What happens if they disagree? Who is responsible? And in fact, we've got the policy executive that sets the tone of this council, that meets after the commercial and resources committees' man. We have a communities committee with responsibility for youth services for an administration that feels that young people have too much already. And we have a scrutiny committee on the order paper when there is just no need. The committee system itself is self-scrutinising. And when councillor Baggett mentions how unhappy he is with the level of scrutiny in decision-making process, what he means is that his own group just aren't that good at it. Now, let me assure him, my group will not hold back in our scrutiny of this administration. But it isn't just their committees that we can't support, it's their administration. We've spent two years listening to them, telling us exactly what they're against. The only problem with that is at some point, you have to decide what you're for. I'd hoped we'd get some form of vindication about that tonight, but once again, the detail is lacking. And while I'm on that point, forget about the last two years. I know we haven't heard any constructive policies for two years. Council was dissolved on the 25th of March. We haven't heard any policies since the 25th of March. We heard nothing during the election campaign. We heard nothing in the last three weeks about their policies. And we have a policy executive committee that apparently sets the direction of this council that doesn't meet until the 15th of July. We've still got to wait another six weeks. Residents of this borough are rightly asking, what does this new administration stand for? This is not an administration full of ideas. This is not an administration that can rise to meet the challenge that our borough needs. This is an order paper led by a Conservative party that is keen for more dither and delay than making a difference. This is an order paper that we cannot support.
Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. How long do I have just to confirm? Not 45 seconds, your favourite?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, can I start off by congratulating the mayor to his new role? May have voted against him, but I congratulate you to your role. And I could be rather beastly, as we see with the Labour and the Conservatives at each other's throats. But I think 16 months ago, there was no in-person council meetings. This is the first time we've been able to sit here and have a proper council meeting, and we get more business done that way. So I'm going to start off on a kind tone, and also, what makes me take that point of view was that outrageous, outrageous statement by the leader of Essex County Council on Tuesday. I made reference to the change of administration. And he spoke about the incoming administration, and I thought that was a terrible slur he put on the borough. That you couldn't get any worse. That's an outrageous thing. They've not even had a chance to present their order paper, and that's what the leader of Essex County Council said. And this is one of the reasons why I will be voting against this order paper. Why abolish local government reform? Why do we want to be attached to Essex County Council? They're bloodsuckers. Look at the state of our roads. Drive to Chelmsford, it's like you've crossed into a different country. They want stuff outside of our borough.
Councillor Smith.
Mr Mayor, I am speaking and you're interrupting.
Councillor Smith, I've given you some latitude. Could you address the item eight?
That's what I'm doing, if you listen.
Could you?
Are you listening, Mr Mayor?
Councillor Smith.
Are you listening to what I'm saying?
Councillor Smith, if you just give me a moment, if you give me a moment, please. I've asked you if you could address your comments to item eight, please.
That's what I'm doing, but you don't listen. Have you been to Specsavers to get your ears tested? What I am trying to make clear, this order paper does not include a local government reorganisation committee. That is what you are not listening to, Mr Mayor. It is very important we have that local government reorganisation. This administration, I take it as a compliment. They've mentioned about the estates need improvement. Then why did you vote against the HRA five-year programme to regenerate the outside of our estates last year? Why did you vote against that? Why did you vote against HRA pride teams? I'm glad you've come round to our line of thinking. I'm really glad you have. But, Mr Mayor, but, Mr Mayor, the penny is learnt late. Then we're getting the backtracks, the U-turns. On election, lecturing, social media, they told people Leyden, 21st of June, when the COVID restrictions were lifted, Leyden Community Centre's open. We heard from the leader, July. Hope it is July this year. Hope it is the 21st of June, because people here are very passionate, indeed. And I must go on to say, register my protest with this order paper. It is not giving the focus for our young people. They need their youth zone, and they need that now. If you are determined to fight, if you are determined to fight drugs, and, Mr Mayor, are you able to do your job and keep order in the chamber? Mr Mayor, are you doing your job to keep decorum in the chamber? Or must opposition members be heckled?
Councillor Smith, when you are showing respect to me and being kind, I will assist you. Until then, you carry on as you are.
Oh, if that's the rules, Mr Mayor. So if a Conservative talks cobbler, Mr Mayor, they don't get heckled. But when other people are in the back, councillor Stroller, I know has poor hearing because of age, he can't quite hear me, he just texts me, but he can't hear me because people want to heckle.
Well, councillor Smith.
Are you doing your job, Mr Mayor? Are you capable of doing your job?
Councillor Smith, just take a moment. I've only just taken the chair. I've asked everyone to be kind and respectful. You've asked me if I've gone to Specsavers. You've asked me if I will do my job. Don't interrupt, please. And all I'm saying to you is that, all I'm saying to you, councillor Smith, is that I will listen to you if you will listen to me. If you are having difficulty speaking with some heckling from the public, I will ask the public to refrain from heckling, please. So public, please refrain from heckling so that councillor Smith can think when he is speaking. So councillor Smith, will you carry on, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Did I lose that time you've taken away from me? Have you kept a record of how long I've spoken for?
The officers will make sure you have the adequate time to speak and think.
Just wanted to confirm that. And thank you for finding your roles, keeping order in the chamber, I appreciate that. But what I would say in conclusion to the new administration, dazzle us. Give us something wonderful. Give us some reason we can support you. Because when he was last in office, under the present leadership, with respect, Mr Mayor, I couldn't see anything we could support. Maybe it's a case of different leadership, I don't know. But the borough deserves best, and us independents will fight for the borough. And we wish all members the very best, and hopefully, Mr Mayor, you can brush down on being on your roll again. Thank you.
Could I ask councillor Harrison to speak, please?
Thank you. Can I just say first of all that from councillor Brockman and myself's point of view for this municipal year, we will judge and support things totally on their merits, in the interests of the borough, and of course particularly of Wickford. Mr Mayor, if I'm going to be interrupted by councillor Turner?
Councillor Harrison, I think you are correct. Councillor Turner, councillor Harrison should be able to speak without interruption. So could we show him the respect, please? Only one member speaking at a time. Councillor Harrison, could you carry on, please?
Thank you. Can I just say that I've looked at the order paper, and I can see reasons why you've changed some of the committees, particularly the breaking up of the committee I chaired for the last two years, Neighbourhood and Public Spaces Committee. As members will know who attended that committee, it was an extremely busy committee with quite a lot on the agenda. I would say that 90% of it was non-political, and agreement was reached on many, many good things. But for the pandemic, I think the new Pitsy swimming pool could well have been open now, because we carried on what was going on previously from these 2017, 2018. I think it could have happened. I hope it happens next year. It should do. As councillor Rimon knows, he came to the committee, I gave him an assurance, from my point of view as chairman then, that it should open and it will open. Biodiversity with the pollinator plan has, and I hope will continue to be a success. And it's because of some of these things I understand the splitting up of the remit. It's sad, in my view, that the youth zone is likely to be ditched, because I think the youth mayor was at the presentation on the youth zone, which was held, and was fully supportive of it at that time. And I find it strange that there's private money being brought in to this council for the youth zone. And it was Labour Party members wanting it, private money, and Conservative members opposing it. On the Leyden Community Centre, at my committee then, I tried to be very fair. Residents came in with a petition, and that petition, we operated, and made a decision in accordance with that petition. I hope Leyden Community Centre does get sorted out, because I've seen the promise of a 21st of June opening. a 21st of June opening. Indeed, I think councillor Dadd, you did say you'll be down there first of all to buy the drinks. So I'm told. So we wait to see that, of course. Important things coming up are the waste strategy and climate change. And with the government likely to enact their environmental bill by November, so the Prime Minister can lord it at the conference in Glasgow, it's going to be very important. I wish the administration success because some things have to carry on and I don't believe in ditching things just because of politics and change. There's important things as a, as a council we need to do and to continue to do. I would however, with the, I hope the leader will agree with this, I'd like to move an amendment to the bus forum and rail forum. I'd like to increase the number to six, to include councillor Brockman on the bus forum and myself on the rail forum. The reasons being, on the bus forum, I don't think there's a member from Wickford and buses in and out of Wickford are continually being raised. And councillor Brockman was chairman of the bus forum last time and it's a non-political group and I think there should be a little bit more access. On the rail forum, everybody knows of my career involved in the railway. I think it's useful to have someone like that when dealing with Greater Anglia and the C2C. And those on the rail forum previously will know that that expertise was used wisely. So I will move that amendment. I'm sure councillor Brockman is likely to second it if asked. Yes, thank you.
Thank you councillor Harrison. In relation to your proposal, the secretary is councillor Brockman, is that correct?
Yes, it's on pages 21 and 22.
21 and 22. And it's to have an additional member on the bus and rail forum. That's the proposal. Councillor Brockman, do you wish to speak on, on second? No. Therefore, I open that matter up for debate. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this item? Councillor Morris, please.
I just wish to query why councillor Harrison is saying that the rail forum doesn't have a Wickford member on as councillor Don Morris is on it.
Bus forum, was, bus forum, I mentioned.
Councillor Buckley.
Thank you, Chairman. And I was actually going to speak on the substantive motion and if you'll give me a little bit of indulgence, I won't ask to speak again, but.
No, just speak on this item and then I'll call you on the next.
Just on the matter of the amendment that councillor Harrison proposes, I think he needs to look back at last year's illegitimate administration. It was not elected last year. A substantial proportion of those members were up for election but carried on for another year, doing the damage that they were doing to this borough. And I think if you look back at last year's order paper, it was all the so-called alliance administration. Councillor Harrison and councillor Brockman, together with other independents, aligned themselves to a left-wing lunatic administration. They excluded all the Conservatives from those posts. They excluded the Conservatives from those posts. They should not be surprised if we refuse that amendment and we keep with the order paper as moved by councillor Bagot, which was an excellent order paper, Mr Mayor.
Is there any other speaker on the amendment? There are no other speakers on the amendment. Oh, sorry. Councillor Green.
Forgive me, Mr Mayor, I don't have a, the rules with me, I don't have a number, but I object to being referred to as a lunatic and I would request that members don't use mental health slurs in this chamber. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McDonald. If there are no other speakers on this item, I will put it to a vote. Sorry councillor Ferguson, I'm having difficulty seeing everyone, so I'll ask again, is there any other speaker on the amendment? Councillor Buckley. Councillor Buckley, in relation to the comment that you made during your speech, are you able to say that you will withdraw that, please?
Mr Chairman, I described it as a lunatic administration. I was not referring to individual members and I stand by that.
So can I just confirm that you don't want to withdraw the comment? Don't want to withdraw the comment?
No, I'm not withdrawing the comment because of describing the administration.
Thank you.
It's a poor administration and an illegitimate administration.
Councillor McDonald, I've asked councillor to withdraw it, I can't do any more than that. I won't, I won't comment any further. In relation to the vote, I now go to the vote. Those in favour of the amendment as proposed by councillor Harrison and seconded by councillor Brockman, those in favour? Those against?
Can I, can I say that is shameful, Mr Mayor? A non-political issue.
Councillor Harrison, could you stop for a moment, please? In relation to the vote, whilst we're taking the vote, I'll ask you to be quiet for a moment. If you want to indicate a point of order, I'm happy to take it. If not, I'd ask for no interruptions, please. Thank you. So those against, did we have? Any abstentions, please? That amendment is lost. I'll go back to the substantive and I wish to call councillor Blake.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure, congratulations, Luke, on becoming deputy mayor. Congratulations, you deserve it, Luke, well done. Just on a couple of things, I've known councillor Buckley, just on the issue we just had, I've known councillor Buckley for God many years and he's a very close friend of mine as his, as his family. And there was no slur, no intentions made whatsoever by councillor Buckley, it's just not in his nature. Couple of things before I actually go, what I was going to say, I heard councillor Ferguson start speaking about the swimming pool and I wasn't going to bring it up, but it was brought up by himself, so I'm going to dive in. And my diving, first of all, is going to say, it was started under myself, in my committee, with the leader, Andy Bagot, when we said, this is what we want to do and want to achieve. We tried to get one also in Langdon, but unfortunately it just wasn't viable, as that would have been the case. So we don't take any lectures on that and I am really going to be trying and be as independent as I can possibly be on this issue. I'd also like to thank, if I may, Mayor, all the clothes shops in Basarden and Pitsy and Wickford, because I have to say they've done an exceptional job by having overlaid stuff as for, I can see quite a number of councillors who have obviously gone out and bought new suits and shirts so they can fit into them, as this is the first meeting we've had for many a year. I would like, I was going to, I won't lie to you, I was initially going to abstain on this and my rationale behind that is, and I heard what councillor Bagot said regarding, they banned us, it was churlish, they're banning us from all the committees last year. And I just think sometimes two wrongs don't make a right. However, I was extremely, I was extremely impressed by his, by his speak, speech and it gave me confidence, very, very much so. I will hold it into account, as he knows that, whether it be on a personal level or in a chamber, that they do deliver. Because I know that I worked extremely hard regarding the Parkside issue in particular and whilst we didn't get a councillor from the Conservative Party was not elected there, it was something that they put in their literature and hopefully they can uphold that. So as I say, I was, I was impressed. It's a good, really good speech that he done. I honestly believe they're going to try and commit it and deal with it, particularly the Langdon centre. But what impressed me most about that was the comment that he said, if we fail and cannot achieve it, we give a rationale as to why. Because there will be things on there that you can't achieve. I think he's already said you can't achieve the 2% council tax deduction this year. He's gave a rationale behind that and I think that's important that that is what you do. On everything that you do or can't achieve, which you did put in your literature, because there will be things you can't, that you have a rationale behind it to serve that. So I will be supporting this now because I think, I do believe in it. I believe in the leader's ambition for the whole of the borough. I also believe councillor Harrison mentioned the Waste Management Committee is going to be huge this year and I've already spoken to Craig, or councillor Rimmer, I suppose, councillor Rimmer, not Craig, just because he goes in my car, doesn't give me any petrol money, but there you go, that's another story. Just to let you know that he's, I believe he'll do a grand job in that position and work hard. So I wish the administration all the luck in the world and I mean that from my heart. And I say, I make no bones about it, I'm a Maggie Thatcher blue and I'll say that to the day I die. Circumstances are what they are, but best of luck to you. I wish you well and my door is always open to people if they want to talk about things because I have a little bit of experience, then please know where I am. But thank you very much, Mayor.
Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm just going to ask the leader of the council after his speech, what's the big plan? Where is the long-term vision for this Basarden Borough? Not any quick fixes, but the long-term vision. So far, things have got off to a rather shaky start, don't you think? We have several more additional committees that are going to cost the taxpayer an extra, as he said, £19,000 in councillors allowances. And I hope that is not going to be the case, genuinely I do. And I hope you recall the MPs expenses scandal in 2009. You might also recall it didn't go down too well with the public. So it seems odd that this is the way forward for the Conservatives who have, after all, are supposed to conserve small government policies, Maggie Thatcher's, councillor Blake was talking about, privatisation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But moving on, I was wondering if you had any plans at all of returning to the cabinet system in the near future? Or do you think it has already come? Because I noticed from the paper that a scrutiny committee has just popped up again. And I just wanted to provide you with a quick lesson. Scrutiny is part of the cabinet system because in the cabinet system, cabinet members can make decisions without referring to anyone but the single party-controlled cabinet. And that's why scrutiny committees were part of that system, normally chaired by an opposition member, I might add, to keep the cabinet in check. However, under the committee system, which we currently have councillor Bagot, there is no cabinet. All decisions are scrutinised and made in the actual committees. Under the cabinet system, the cabinet member, let's call them the cabinet member for preventing opportunities for young people, that cabinet member could shut down the concept of a youth zone in Cherry Down without much bother from the opposition. But in a committee system, that decision to shut down a youth zone, that has to come before the committee with opposition members on it and that makes it a bit more transparent. So to reiterate, why is there a scrutiny committee that is superfluous to needs? Why are there more unpopular, expensive committees being created? And most of all, why shut down a youth zone? I must ask the leader of the council to explain clearly to me and to the rest of the council, what's the big plan? What's the long-term vision for Basarden Borough? Because so far, it's not much cop, is it? Thank you, Mayor.
Councillor Rimmer.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And may I say congratulations to both you and councillor Mackenzie for becoming mayor and deputy mayor. I want to amplify the comments made by councillor Blake and others in respect of councillor Bagot's speech. It was a fantastic speech, setting out the vision of this administration. This committee structure as set out is a lot more efficient. There aren't all the massive subcommittees underneath that were created by the last administration, which would taking up officer time of an evening and officer resource. So economically, this committee structure is actually going to be a lot more efficient and it's actually more focused on the needs of residents than ever before. We have an enforcement committee that's actually going to be dealing with enforcement issues in the green belt and antisocial behaviour and an issue I know that members care about from all political persuasions. This time, we are going to actually be able to tackle it for residents, abane many residents' lives and I commend that. I myself am very much looking forward to working with everybody in respect of the leisure and environment committee. I agree again with councillor Blake, the pool is something close to my heart, something I campaigned on, something I'm proud that we as an administration put in train in 2017, 2018. So I hope, as chair of this committee, that I will have the pleasure of actually opening it with the mayor and the deputy mayor and any of us who want to come along for a dip because it should be good and we probably do need to actually swim off those calories. So on that note, I just say once again that the structure of these committees as set out, which are economically efficient, that are focused on residents' needs and the vision that our leader, Andy Bagot, put forward today, I think Basarden as a borough has an extremely bright future. Thank you very much.
I intend to call only two, two more speakers, councillor Buckley and then the leader to wind up. Could councillor Smith, if there's a bell to ring, just to let him know that that will be when I will go to the vote? Councillor Buckley.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And my apologies for failing to welcome you to your new role when I spoke briefly earlier. I've only got a couple of observations to make on this order paper and really picking up some councillor Ferguson's objections to it. And he just wants to turn the clock back to the past. He talks about, accuses councillor Bagot of a lack of vision. I would actually put it to him that the real vision does come from councillor Bagot and from the remaining front bench of this Conservative administration. Councillor Smith really exposes his revulsion to working with the county council and perhaps I should declare an interest there as a member of the county council, as presumably should councillor Smith as well. And when you actually consider what the county council can do and is willing to do, it was not able to work with the former administration. The leadership was so anti the county council that it was not possible to deliver projects. That is possible now. We have a very good leader in councillor Bentley at county hall and we have an extremely good leader here in councillor Bagot. Those two will work together with the support, not only of myself, but I'm sure my other colleagues. And I'd just like to mention to councillor Rimmer, I actually served on the committee which he is now to chair and obviously we did discuss, as was mentioned, things like Pitsy swimming pool. And I would just like to draw councillor Rimmer's attention to the opening ceremony when we reopened the Wickford Pool some years ago. And it involved councillor Blake, who rightly introduced himself as my friend of many years. It involved Mark Francois, MP, and me. We cut a ribbon underwater in the deep end, so I'm hoping to see councillor Rimmer in the deep end at Pitsy swimming pool. And perhaps he will take some of his Labour colleagues along with him also in the deep end. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Before I call councillor Bagot, I will say councillor Buckley, the vision is not only the front bench, I think the vision is for the people and going back out to re, to reconsult and ask them now what they want is important. Because during the pandemic, they were not given the opportunity adequately to be asked what their vision. And I think this is about the residents' vision and we will come here to debate it. And I'm sure you will concur with that.
You're absolutely right, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. So I will call then councillor Bagot to wind up on this item.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. First of all, I want to reassure councillor Ferguson that he needs to lose no sleep on whether or not councillor Sullivan and I disagree. I'm not too sure how it works in the Labour Group, but we have a collegiate approach in the Conservative Party and what we do is we agree, we have discussions and if there is a disagreement, we find out what compromise and what can be done. But when you're actually focused on the priorities of residents, there shouldn't be any disagreement. If we say we're going to deliver on our priorities based by our election pledges, there is no black and white there. Sorry, there is a black and white there, there is no grey area. If residents are saying they want something, that is our responsibility to deliver. So we will not be disagreeing in that regard. He mentioned that the committee system is self-scrutinising and yes, we saw that last year. I mean, just as an example, you only had to say the word cratus and you were shut down like a tonne of bricks, you were muted on Zoom, you were threatened and all sorts of things.
Point of order, Mr Mayor.
Just by saying one word. So no scrutiny there whatsoever.
Sorry, councillor, sorry, councillor Bagot, I've heard a point of order from councillor Jack Ferguson. Can I ask what code or what rule, please?
Point of order, 16D.
One moment, please. It's denied. Carry on, please, councillor Bagot.
Thank you. Councillor Ferguson also said, what are the residents asking for? We're not delivering on it. That's exactly the point. That's exactly what we're doing. We will be listening to residents, we have listened to residents, we'll be delivering for residents and that's something that the Labour Group and the independents don't seem to get, unfortunately. The residents elect us, the residents are the ones that we actually support and work on behalf of. Councillor Smith, for instance, is more focused on local government reorganisation and navel-gazing because of his beef with Essex County Council than actually representing the residents that elect him. He ducked for cover when the high-rise monstrosities were in the news, couldn't find it anywhere.
Point of order, Mr Mayor, impugning the reputation of a member.
Carry on, councillor Bagot, please. I can't have an interruption. If you want to raise a point of order, raise it correctly.
He also stated that we'd said on the 21st of June, the Langdon Community Centre would be reopened. I don't know where he got that from, because we've been very clear that we will reopen the Langdon Centre as soon as possible and as I said earlier, we'll be getting a clear timetable for residents to know what's going on and it will be explained to them. Yet again, an example of the lies we get from the opposition. He asked us to dazzle us. Well, yeah, I'll tell you what, we will dazzle, we will dazzle by being full of integrity and actually delivering on the promises we made and it's that simple. You don't need a big vision to actually listen to what the residents want and to actually deliver what the residents want.
One moment, please, councillor Bagot. Councillor Smith, could you tell me what?
Impugning the reputation of members. He speaks about integrity, referring to his group as the only group of integrity.
Can you, well, councillor Smith, I'm going to let councillor Bagot carry on, please don't interrupt any further. Thank you. Councillor Bagot.
Councillor Harrison referred to the tonnes of money that were available for the youth zone. I have to say right now, and I will correct this, it's worthy to change, but I've seen no evidence of this money that was made available for the youth zone and I think it was incredibly presumptive to believe that coming out of a pandemic, that there would be businesses out there with £4.1 million in their pocket just waiting to spend on a folly. Now councillor Davis asked a very good question, an excellent question in fact, the long-term vision. And yes, it is important to have a long-term vision, less easy to deliver on a long-term vision, but very easy to have one. And that's what we saw last year with the smoke and mirrors and the Emperor's new clothes of arenas, high-rise buildings, youth zones, all of these things, talk and talk, but no delivery, no backup with regards to being able to deliver it, all a lot of selling the sausage and not selling the sizzle. From our point of view, it's back to basics. We will be listening to what the residents have. But I'll tell you what my vision is, and I might be very simplistic in this, a resident should be able to wake up in this borough, look out of the window and have a smiley face, happy in the environment they live in, not worrying about crime on the doorstep, not worrying about where they're going to find a job, being able to shop, being able to conduct their life in a happy manner. And if residents are waking up with frowny faces, that's where we get it wrong, because it's all about residents. This borough, it's the same as when we talk about houses, people talk about units, they're not units, they're a place that people live in. When we talk about the borough, this is full of real human beings that actually live, breathe, work, play in this borough and it's absolutely fundamental that we deliver for them, that we listen to them and that we're tuned in to what they want. And that is the human part of being elected and that's the human part that I intend this administration to bring and deliver. Deliver because it's the right thing to do, make promises because we believe that we can deliver on those promises. I have total faith in the team that we have, both in the front bench and the back bench. I have been blown away by the enthusiasm of the people we have here that all want to deliver for the residents and newly-elected councillors, councillor Wingfield, councillor Chris Allen, councillor Adeshele, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce Davida's name, Davida, and they have bring a passion and a real desire to serve the residents of this borough that is actually heartwarming and breathtaking and that's what we bring and that's what we will have. Our vision is really, really simple. Deliver for residents, give them the environment and the world that they want to live in where they're happy to live in it. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
A vote is needed. Those in favour of the order paper or item eight, please show. Those against, please.
Didn't convince you.
Any abstentions, please? The voting record, 22/4, two abstained, 15 against. 24, yes, 24. Sorry, I'm going to repeat that. Voting order four, it's 24. I think there's a fire alarm. I'll ask people to evacuate, please.